Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our business meeting to order. I think this is our first business meeting of the year as a result of all the snow and weather that we've been dealing with. Please know that Dr. Boone is out ill, so Dr. Rogers has the pleasure of standing in her stead this evening. But with that, we're going to go ahead and proceed with our meeting, and Ms. Basine, I believe you have some opening remarks.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. The colors tonight are being presented by the National Junior ROTC Color Guard from Granby High School, under the direction of Chief Warrant Officer Jerome Barrett. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of the colors and the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, arch. March time. Arch. Colors. Hope. Order. Arms. Ready, cut. Left. Ace. Present. Colors. Ready, cut.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms. Ready, cut. Right. Ace. Horse. Arms. Order. Arch.
Please be seated. All right, we will proceed with our agenda. We have the superintendent's report. Dr. Rogers?
Yes, thank you Chairman Jordan, school board members, members of the communities. This evening, as traditionally has been done in the past, in Dr. Boone's absence, we will be sharing our monthly video that highlights some of the wonderful things that have taken place throughout the course of our school district during the month of December. And we're excited to share just a little bit of what happens in our school district every day. So with that being said, I want to thank Dr. Legrand and her staff for creating these wonderful opportunities to share with our community. Dr. Legrand.
Just prior to the holiday break, seniors in the Medical and Health Specialties Program at Maury High School were recognized during the ninth annual white shirt ceremony. Family, friends, and underclassmen in the program were all on hand as 30 students crossed the stage while their names were read aloud. The seniors then recited the Student Hippocratic Oath and listened to valuable advice from graduates of the program.
This program was incredible. The academic rigor and the important stress on time management truly set me apart when I got to college. Particularly the anatomy and physiology class, it was a prerequisite for my major, and I was a step ahead of other students for having the rigor of this program before going into college.
I think they're very, very proud to participate in this ceremony. I think they realize that it means that they've made it all the way through. To say those Hippocrates-- the words of the Hippocratic Oath that Saul Brodsky wrote are really so relevant to high school kids. It was really tailor-made for them, and I think the kids take it to heart.
It means to us that we are almost done with the medical program. Not a lot of students receive this opportunity that we have, and especially working with cadavers in the prestigious EVMS. They have given me so many opportunities. It's helped me grow into a person that I am today.
Beautification is going on, as Booker T. Washington High School's courtyard is getting a makeover.
So today, we have members from the Norfolk Botanical Gardens. They have come out to do some gardening with some of our seniors. They are planting vegetables, organic materials, and just showing our seniors a little bit about how to garden and how to grow organic items on their own.
The garden has been working with Teens With A Purpose, and some of the kids that are part of that organization are students here, so that's how we got connected. The students here have been great today. They dove right in, put their gloves on, and just started digging. They weren't scared of a thing, and I love the participation and enthusiasm that they have for doing this project, which makes me feel it'll be very successful, and I love to see that in our youth.
I thought it was a great experience. I really am appreciative of them coming out here and helping us build a better habitat for the animals out here and making us feel better about this area in our school. So I'm pretty blessed about this. It's great. It's a great experience.
I came in voluntarily because I think it's a great opportunity that the principal has given us to come out and, you know, make this a beautiful place for us to come and eat and socialize. And I think it's also a good opportunity for seniors to look forward to, up-and-coming seniors to look forward to, to come out here and just be different, you know? Nobody else is doing it.
Students, staff, and community members spent a chilly Saturday morning planting trees at Calcott Elementary. This tree planting was the first step of a food forest project that will include the addition of various types of plants and will ultimately turn the space into an outdoor classroom for students.
They will be able to observe all of the plant SOLs, the Plant Life Science SOLs. They'll be able to observe a lot of the ecology SOLs. We're working with the Norfolk Botanical Gardens to help develop programming for selecting which plants we plant here that'll actually help exemplify the SOLs that they're looking to teach.
Well, the students are going to get to see from planting to actual production of the plants and being able to come and pick the fruit that's developed here by the plants and see how it goes from farm to table. So it'll be really exciting. We're going to set up a weather station. They can come out and record weather data. It's just a great opportunity for them to learn all the science SOLs in fourth and fifth grade.
Some deserving students at Jay Cox Elementary received bicycles just in time for the holidays thanks to the International Longshoreman's Association. Twenty-five bikes were given away as part of the Fourth Annual Make-A-Child-Happy Bike Giveaway Program. For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNS-TV 47 or the NPS website.
As you can see, we have quite a bit to celebrate throughout the course of December, and as having been a former science teacher, I'm pleased to see that we are providing rich, authentic opportunities for our students to engage in planting gardens and many things that have application far beyond our time in Norfolk Public Schools. So we are appreciative that we just got a snapshot of what goes on in our school district.
Anything else, sir?
No, it's nice to have a full week of school.
Yes, it is. Yes. So we thank you for that report. Moving on to our agenda, next we have several monthly observances that are coming up for the month of February. Ms. Banks, would you like to reference those items for us, please?
We have several observances for the month of February. The first is Career and Technical Education Month, and this is-- this month is education that directly prepares students for high-wage, high-demand careers. CTE covers many different fields, including healthcare, information technology, advanced manufacturing, hospitality, and management, and many more. It is this campaign that we bring public awareness to take place each February to celebrate the value of CTE and the achievements and accomplishments of the CTE programs across the country and especially in Norfolk Public Schools. And the second observance for the month is the Virginia School Boards Association School Board Appreciation Month. This is our opportunity to salute the service of our school board members, not only in Virginia but here in Norfolk Public Schools during the month of February. The theme this month is Advancing Opportunities for All, and this reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. The month-long observance is an opportunity for your school division and community to build a stronger understanding of the crucial role school boards assume in representing a democracy. School boards voluntarily tackled the enormous job of governing multimillion-dollar budgets and large populations of students while observing our core democratic values. Also, in the month of February, we have several week observances, and they are National School Counseling Week, February 5th through the 9th, National PTA Take Your Family to School Week, and that is February the 11th through the 17th, and then there's the Virginia School Board Association School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, which is February 19th through the 23rd. And the proclamations for these observances are on our consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. We're going to proceed forward. We have next on the agenda an audit report by our friends at KPMG. Ms. Doyle and Reverend Haywood served on the audit committee. So, Dr. Rogers, any introductory comments you have prior to coming forward?
I'm going to ask Ms. Ingram to come and share and introduce our colleagues.
Good evening, Dr. Rogers, Mr. Jordan, the school board members. We have with us tonight Ms. Cheryl Siskros of KPMG, who performed our audit for last school year. She presented last month to the audit committee, and she's here tonight to present her report to the entire school board. But before she comes, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ray Reyes, who's our Senior Director of Accounting, who takes care of all the financial needs of the district. So with that, Ms. Siskros.
Thank you. I guess I'm okay. Thank you, everybody, for giving me this opportunity to close the loop on the fiscal 2017 audit. I guess I'd like to start also by thanking Ray and Ms. Ingram up here for their wonderful assistance and cooperation with us throughout the process. When I saw Ray tonight, I said, "Oh, he's got an awfully big smile on his face," right? Because the audit's finished. So we did complete the audit before the holidays and-- Oops. There it goes. And issued all of the financial statements for the school system, as well as for all the entities associated with our contract with the city of Norfolk. We had an unmodified opinion on the financials, which is the best one you can get, so that's good news. And we also issue a kind of a negative assurance-type opinion on internal control and compliance as required under government auditing standards. So we did have a more detailed meeting with Reverend Haywood and Ms. Doyle, who serve as your audit committee of the school board, and went through the findings from the audit in detail. So, and you also have a letter from us that details some of the required communications that we need to make to you as the governing body under professional standards. So I'll be somewhat brief with those. That's the first item on our agenda. And then we'll talk for just a minute about the single audit of the federal programs. The school system is audited as part of the city's single audit, a component of that, but we look at a couple of programs on a standalone basis for the schools each year. And then we'll end briefly with a discussion of some work that we did on the Student Activity Funds. So we'll start with required communications. If you take a look at the letter that you received from us, the first part of the letter talks about what an audit is and what it isn't. The goal of an audit is to identify material errors in the financial statements. It's not to give an opinion on internal control or, you know, assure you that there's no fraud. We do focus on those couple of things from the perspective of how they might cause or create a greater probability of a material error in the statements. If you look at the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that we issue or that the school system issues each year that includes the financial statements, it's a pretty thick book, and there's a lot of other information in there in addition to the financials. Although we don't audit that other information, we do read it and make sure it's consistent with what we've learned in the process of performing the audit. There were no new accounting standards adopted this year, no unusual transactions that we would need to report to you. In terms of management's judgments and accounting estimates, we do talk with the audit committee about these upfront. The most significant estimates for the school system are your retirement and post-employment health care liabilities. You'll see a change with those next year as we go to put that health care liability on the books, similar to what we did with the pensions a couple of years ago. So we'll stay tuned on that one. We also attached to the letter a couple of what we considered to be immaterial adjustments that were not made to the financial statements in the interest of efficiency and time in completing the process. No disagreements or, you know, any issues encountered in performing the audit, and we did confirm to you in writing in that letter that we are independent of the school, of the Norfolk Public Schools, under all relevant professional standards. I'm also happy to report that we had no material weaknesses in internal control, and that is explicitly stated in that opinion on compliance and controls that appears at the back of the CAFR. So, single audit. There were two programs that we took a look at this year for Norfolk Public Schools as part of the city's audit. They were the Child Nutrition Cluster, which is primarily comprised of the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program, a very large program for the city of Norfolk as a whole, not just for Norfolk Public Schools. And then we also took a look at a program that used to be called Improving Teacher Quality that now is referred to as Supporting Effective Instruction State Grant. The audit was performed for the second year under the Uniform Guidance, new rules that took effect starting last year. We did have one finding in the audit related to the Child Nutrition Cluster that related to the eligibility testing that happens with the folks that run that program. We did not view that to be a material finding, primarily because so many of the children that participate in the program get in there in other ways, either through qualifying for TANA, for Medicaid, or through some of your whole-school programs that you have in place through Title I. So, but something to work on moving forward. We'll talk just for a second about the Student Activity Funds. We did take a different approach this year on the Student Activity Funds, and it was done in an effort to just create some efficiency and lower some cost, which is always a good thing to do. Instead of auditing and, you know, having KPMG send folks out to every single school across the school system, we changed the approach to an agreed-upon procedures-type report where we selected schools that were higher-risk, meaning they have more activity and transactions, and also higher cash balances, and we visited those schools physically. And then we performed some other procedures around, you know, at least the bank reconciliations and a few transactions from the other schools. We had, you know, I mean, there's always a few minor findings and issues that come up. I mean, the bookkeepers, you know, that are in charge of those funds are generally not, you know, full-fledged accountants. They wear lots of hats, so, but nothing significant. And I guess I would say that over the past several years, we've seen, you know, some improvement in, you know, with training and that type of thing in the number of little things that go wrong, and no larger items of note were reported in that audit. So if there are no questions, that's all I have for you. And again, I do thank you for the opportunity to work with Norfolk Public Schools and for all of the courtesy and support that we get in performing the audit.
Well, thank you. I ask you to wait one moment. First, I'd just like to ask Ms. Doyle, Reverend Haywood, if there's anything else you all would like to add or bring to the board's attention from your audit committee assessment.
I just want to thank KPMG. Cheryl, you've been wonderful over these years, and I appreciate your candidness, your candor, and your honesty moving forward, and you answer all these questions that we have for you, and I appreciate that. I want to thank Rhonda and Ray Reyes for your work as well. I know that we've had vacancies in the previous years, and now we're totally staffed, and that's really helped with the auditing process here. So again, I just want to thank Rhonda and Ray for that as well, and then Cheryl, to you and your team at KPMG. And I just appreciate of a very good report tonight. Thank you very much.
I too would like to thank Ms. Ingram and her team for the work that they do that's enabled us to have the kind of spotless report that KPMG has given us. And I think we're very fortunate to have been able to have Cheryl be a part of this audit for such a long period of time, because you've come to know Norfolk Public Schools, and you have guided us, and we are so thankful for this partnership. I think it has worked well, and we appreciate your team.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words.
Others have any questions or comments? Ms. Basine?
I was just-- thank you for the report. I'm just curious if you have any recommendations that are new. I mean, I know you didn't outline them here, but with the disagreements that you did find with the Student Activity Funds, are there specific strategies that you noticed that helped with the improvements that you noted or anything?
I mean, I think the key with the Student Activity Funds is training, you know, and oversight. I mean, there was, you know, a few periods of time over the years when the position that's in charge of oversight here in this building, you know, has been vacant. And, you know, we've now had Beverly Allgood in that position for, you know, a couple of years, and Frank Thompson was before her, and he did a great job, too, in really trying to work with some folks that are not accountants first, you know? But it really doesn't make sense, you know, from a cost perspective, to hire 52 accountants to go, you know, sit in each one of these buildings and, you know, try to train them in the importance of, you know, the procedures and controls. And they're very well documented, you know, which also helps in terms of what, you know, what the bookkeepers are supposed to do, you know, in certain circumstances. I mean, I doubt it'll ever be perfect, you know, but, you know, you'll go out and find every single transaction is exactly right, and so, you know, there's always a cost benefit that goes along with any internal control system or any system, you know, that has to be considered, so.
Yeah, I think there are two things to note in that area. One is that the discrepancies in the Student Activity Funds are very minor, and that we can see a steady improvement in the district in that area. So I think that we're doing well with that.
Right. Yeah.
Anyone else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you so much, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And also to Ms. Doyle and Reverend Haywood, also thank you for your continued work as members of the audit committee.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is citizens' comments on agenda and non-agenda items. When your name is called, if you would please come to the podium that you see in the center aisle, you may adjust the podium to suit your height as appropriate. We ask that you state your name, any information you'd like to share in terms of your connectivity with Norfolk Public Schools. We ask that you state your position, give any facts and other relevant data that you have. If you represent a group or organization, you may ask others to rise and be recognized. If you have any written statements, you can provide those to Ms. Banks, our school board clerk, and we will have those for the record. Speakers are limited to one appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. And please know the school board does not respond to citizens' remarks at the time that they are given. So with that, Ms. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. We have two speakers signed up this evening. The first speaker is Dorian and Jackie Glass, followed by Mr. James Jarman Jr.
Good evening.
Mr. Rogers, Mr. Chairman. First, I am Jackie Glass. This is my husband, Duran. We are the parents of Duran Douglas Glass III and Zaharah Hope Glass of Rosemont, the Academy of International Studies at Rosemont, as well as Coleman Place out of military. Early December this year, our son, Duran Glass, was under investigation for sexual harassment. I'm going to tell him you can leave if you feel uncomfortable. When my husband and I found out that he was under investigation, we went into advocacy mode and told him, "Cooperate with the investigation, you know, confess if you did something wrong, as well as apologize, even if you're found innocent because of the information." Now, that investigation lasted two weeks for reasons out of the school's control, and we got a response that it was nothing found, there was no incident really to report. But that wasn't our major concern, the process. Our major concern about the investigation was the aftermath. My son's spirit is broken, and fortunately, my military training kicked in and told me to ask him, "Are you thinking of harming yourself and others?" As we noticed that his behavior changed over that Christmas break. Now, given a little backstory, he had just dealt with his sister being harassed at school with some little boys grabbing her inappropriately and touching her inappropriately, and he knew of my history of sexual trauma. There was nothing that I could say or do that would disabuse his perception of himself. He was kind of in an emotional prison. Understanding all this, there was little to no advocacy after the event. And so I'm asking the board to kind of take a look at not only the policy of having an informal resolution or formal resolution as it pertains to these sorts of incidents, whether it's sexual harassment or being falsely accused of hitting someone, just thinking of the social ramifications of that, not only for the students but for the teachers. My daughter's teacher is now in a classroom with young men that she has to still fully educate to the best of her abilities that showed some very disturbing behaviors over a series of time. So I just want you guys to at least take that in consideration so that the school can respond, and then parents would also be able to respond. Because had I not had that training or either of us had the understanding of what it means to force someone to be in a sad place and stay there and ask him directly, I don't think we would have known. I think we would have just said, "It's a middle schooler going through middle school or things," and deal with that. So we just ask that you consider that, be a part of your policies with these sorts of investigations.
Briefly, he went from an A student in the class where the accusation came from to a P in that same class. So there's an academic effect. There's a stain left on the accused that's often forgotten. We care about the victim and the accusation, but we too often leave the accused hanging in the aftermath. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Afternoon.
Good evening.
I'm James Jarman Jr., 5503 Barn Hollow. Correction, we have still yet to make our full week because yesterday was teacher's workday. The kids were out there yesterday, so I guess we'll get there by and by. The skin in the game that I have, I have a 12-year-old son in the seventh grade at what is termed the Southside STEM Academy. Science, engineering, and technology is supposed to be the emphasis. I'd like to point out a segment I observed in the video with the students at Booker T. planting trees and that type of thing that is El Mamato where I graduated from. It's nice to plant trees and fly--
I'm James Jarman Jr., 5503 Barn Hall. Correction, we have still yet to make our full week, because yesterday was teacher's workday. The kids were out there yesterday. So, I guess we'll get there by and by. The skin in the game that I have, I have a 12-year-old son in the seventh grade at what is termed the South Side STEM Academy. Science, engineering, and technology is supposed to be the emphasis. I'd like to point out a segment I observed in the video with the students at Bogatee planting trees and that type of thing that is El Mamato where I graduated from. It's nice to plant trees and flowers, but it's slated as a dance and theater school. With that said, in that same vein of planting, we have planted kids at the South Side STEM Academy, and they planted there from K to eight. Experts would say that the kids roughly K through seventh years is his imprint years. And from seven to around age 15 would be his impression years. So, the hypothetical question I would pose to you, what are we imprinting in these children at the South Side? What impression are we giving sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that it's okay to go to a school where everybody looks like me? No diversity, no socioeconomic diversity. Math teacher last year, out. Math teacher this year, out. I registered my child for Spanish and Technology. Two Spanish teachers, out. Can't keep one. I'm not complaining. I'm trying to bring this to your attention, because we cannot let these children fall by the wayside. I fought for the better part of 10 years to gain care and charge and control of my son, not to let him fall through the cracks in a Norfolk public school. I will leave you with this. I'm glad to see, and I have no problems with Dr. Boone, I'm glad to see her be extended an additional year. But I would mind y'all all to remember that five principals who weren't afforded that opportunity to have anything extended, they was demoted. Thank you.
Any others, Ms. Banks?
No, sir. That's all the speakers.
Was there anyone who wanted to speak tonight but did not get the opportunity to sign up? All right. Hearing none, we thank you for bringing the matters to our attention that, that you did, and we appreciate you coming and sharing with us this evening. Next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item that any school board member would like to have pulled from the consent agenda and considered separately? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I second that motion.
All right. Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Mrs. Bassin. Ms. Banks, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Item 5.01, approval of a makeup school day. Dr. Rogers?
Yes. We collectively take a look at several options for making up missed days as a result of the inclement weather that we had as of late. Currently, we need to make up one additional day. So, the recommendation that we'd like to bring to the board for consideration is that of President's Day, which is February 19th, Monday, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
As a makeup day. And the rationale behind selecting February 19th is because it's the next day that makes the most sense without having to use any bank days. We'd like to use those just in case we have some additional inclement weather. So, right now, that's probably the one that makes the most sense. Well, it is the one that makes the most sense.
Questions from board members about February 19th being designated as a makeup day? Dr. Robinson?
It's a federal holiday, correct?
Yes. What, I was going to ask what that normally is. Is it President's Day?
Yes.
Yes. It's a federal holiday, so all the military and the federal government, we shut down. I'm wondering how many people have already made plans for being out of town at that time, and what kind of hardship that's going to be placing on those families, and if that's something even to consider at this point in time.
And since you all gave some, gave some consideration.
We did give some consideration to that. I think there are at least two other school districts that are surrounding us who have also elected to use that day as a makeup day. We certainly did take that into consideration. I think that is somewhat anticipated. We had quite a bit of conversation about which day that we take a look at. A couple of other options were to add additional time to the school day. That didn't go over well, because we still have quite a bit of winter left. So, that's, you know, a little premature for us, because we did account for inclement weather by building that in our calendar days that we presented to the board last year. You know, we certainly could have opted to use some of the bank time, but again, given the fact that we've missed so much instructional time, having an opportunity to have an actual time where, a day where kids can get some instruction, even though it's the second semester for our high school students, but for our elementary babies, it gives them additional day of instruction.
Well, let's address the superintendent's recommendation as a motion. So, the recommendation from the superintendent is to have Monday, February 19th, 2018, as an official makeup school day as a result of the snowstorm that we had in January. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to use Monday, February 19th as a, an official makeup day.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, Ms. Banks, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Next on our agenda is a follow-up of our work session discussion regarding school board policy, CBCA, Charlie Baker Charlie Allen, that works for me, which deals with the disclosure statement required of the superintendent. Just as a reminder, you know, through our normal policy review and adoption process, we would receive policies such as this, send it to the policy review committee to have input both from the board members that are on that committee, as well as having reviewed, review it by the administration. Then, the policy committee would come forward with a recommendation for us in the work session, and then we would bring it forward for any consideration at the business meeting. This particular policy, as a reminder, we approved last year on the consent agenda without it having gone through that process. And what the policy requires is that superintendents would be required to fill out disclosure statements similar to what we're required as school board members. So, what we have before us today is, you know, do we repeal the policy that we did not have an opportunity to vet the first time around, or do we leave it on the books and then therefore have it required for, for action by the superintendent this year? And of course, like any other policy, it's always open for reconsideration at a, at a later time. So, the recommendation before us is to repeal, but just want to kind of see if there's a motion from a member of the board to that respect. Then, we can get a second and have a discussion, then determine what action we would like to take in that regard. So, is there a motion from a member of the school board for us to repeal? And the reason I say that is because if we do not act, since it's already approved, then it would just stay on the books as is and would be addressed accordingly. So, is there a motion for us to repeal policy CBCA?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would repeal the policy CBCA disclosure statement required of the superintendent.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All right. Discussion, further discussion?
Yeah. So, I am comfortable with repealing that policy, because it should be noted that across the state, this policy is not required of superintendents, and including in this area, with the exception of the Portsmouth School District. So, superintendents have not been required to, to disclose these type of statements. And so, I, I, I believe that we should continue with the, the trend that is in the state regarding our superintendent.
Ms. Doyle?
Sure. I favor the transparency of this, and I would be voting no against the repeal, because I think it's good for us to know as a community, just as you all as a community know through my statement of economic interest, what my economic interests are as well. So, I do favor that the superintendent would file a statement of economic interest as well.
And Dr. Robinson?
I concur with Ms. Doyle. I have no question about our current superintendent. I think it's a good policy to have in place for future superintendents, just because of transparency and because the potential for, for conflict of interest, it can be great when someone's coming from outside the district. So, I think it'd be a good idea to, to maintain this, this particular policy.
Ms. Bassin, did you want to comment on it all?
Well, I guess my, my thinking around repealing it, you know, along with piggybacking off of what Reverend Haywood said, is, you know, we are appointed or elected officials, the school, the school board members are, and, and, you know, with that, I understand our necessity to provide our economic interests, however, you know, in line with what other divisions are doing around the state. You know, I feel that, I personally do not feel that the superintendent needs to provide his or her economic interests.
And I'll just comment that I share the commitment to the transparency piece. I would, I'm going to vote in favor of the repeal at this time, only because I think it's a, a timing issue and some functionality on our part. So, as of right now, with the policy being on the book as it is, and frankly, catching us off guard that it was on the books, it would really force superintendent today to prepare for this statement to be filed tomorrow. And so, I just think from a process standpoint, we can act to repeal it, and then send it back to the policy review committee and go through the full process as we would normally do, and always have the opportunity for it to come back before the board for, for action for next year, when there's time for everyone to be fully aware of what's involved with it, and for the superintendent to have time to, to prepare it. But, so that's, that's where I stand on it at this point. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to add at this point? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor and a second to repeal policy CBCA disclosure statement required of the superintendent. Before I call for the vote, Attorney Cloud, you're here, and you've been involved. Is there anything that you wanted to add as far as this, this policy that's before us?
The policy's optional, because the state statute does not require our, our other officials under the level of...
Local school boards, local city councils, and members of, the boards of supervisors of counties.
Thank you. With that said...
So, I got a question.
Questions, please.
Are you telling me that the Norfolk City Council does not have to file a, a statement of economic interest?
No, I'm saying they do.
They do?
The, the other employees of, of this Norfolk, city of Norfolk do not.
Like, the city manager doesn't?
The city manager does not. He could be required to, under the same provision that allows school boards to require this of their superintendents, but he is not.
Are there, are there examples of, like, we know Portsmouth superintendent is required to. Do we have examples of other appointed officials, such as city managers throughout the, the Commonwealth that, that are required?
Not that I know of, but there, there may well be some.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Attorney Cloud. All right. Okay. All right. Ms. Banks, will you please call the roll? And again, the, the motion is to repeal, so aye is to repeal, a nay is to leave it on the books as currently exists.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Nay.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
And again, I'm not questioning our current superintendent. Just for future reference, I vote nay.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Motion passes 3-2. All right. Next, we have a budget planning update. Dr. Rogers?
I'm going to ask Ms. Ingram to come up and divide us with an update on where we are with the budget planning. Ms. Brett?
Ms. Banks, pull up the PowerPoint presentation. What, the update will be basing on the governor's introduced biennium budget and how it will impact us for next school year. Included, what I'll be going over is our current budget. Be looking at our revenue reduction due to our base budget with one-time monies from the city this current school year. Governor McCullough's introduced budget and the impact on our 2019 budget and make steps in the state budget cycle. Before you is our current budget, which is $325,292,145, and it shows you the revenue and the expenditures. It shows the balanced budget. On the next slide is where I want to call your attention to, is the city funds. We received this current year, $124,589,922, and that's to break out a different classification of what the city gave us. The regular appropriation is $117.9 million, and we got $3 million, which is one-time additional appropriation, which means we get it this year, we do not get it, and next year unless they reappropriate it. But going forward, if you're dealing your base budget, you take it out, because they particularly said it was one-time monies. And then, the debt service, that is the construction, technology, and infrastructure funding that, you know, a few years ago, with the sales, real estate tax increase, they set aside money to help fund the schools that they are currently building, and that's $3.6 million. We show it on the revenue side, and we show it on the expenditure side just to have it in our budget, but we really cannot spend that money unless they give us the appropriation to say you can spend it. A few years ago, they did split it out, and we got to use some of that money for technology purchases. But I just wanted to let you know, to start out the budget cycle for next year, we're in a $3 million deficit. The governor's introduced budget. Typically, in the biennium, the governor presents a budget for two years. And Governor McCullough, on Monday, December 18th, before the joint session of the Senate Finance and the House Appropriation, the House Finance Committee presented his budget. This biennium budget covers fiscal years 2019 and 2020. The introduced budget bill gives you the bill number, which is Senate and House Bill Number 30. And the session for the General Assembly actually started on Wednesday, January 10th, and it would run through March 2018. Somewhere around mid-March, they should, the General Assembly should be voting on a budget to determine funding for all school divisions. The key recommendations that's in type in public education, typically, they go through and do technical updates with our direct aid programs. They look at inflation rates, they look at participation rates in the different programs, and they update that. They also recompute the composite index for the biennium. They look at the new sales tax revenue estimates, and this year, they're also revising the fringe benefits that we contribute to the Virginia retirement system. They have in the budget the state share of a 2% salary increase, but it's effective December 1, 2019, which means fiscal year 2020. So, for 2019 budget currently, there is no funding from the state for... So, for 2019 budget currently, there is no funding from the state for a salary increase for employees. The state share, they also have in there the state share for funding one full-time principal in every elementary school, but that is in fiscal year 2020. Currently, the funding ratio that they do is for 0.5 elementary principal for schools that is less than 300. We have currently six schools that are less than 300 in student population, so therefore, the state does not provide any funding for a principal there. And if you want to know the schools, I can, Chesterfield, Tyewater Park, Monroe, Fairlawn, Poplar Halls, and San Alino, currently is less than 300 students, so the state does not provide any funding. That is funding that comes from local contribution to fund those principals. Next one, Jamie. The composite index for the next biennium, it actually went down from .2988 to .2958, which is very slight, which we really do not get much more state money when the lower your composite index, the more funding that the state provides for you. Under the VRS rate changes is good news. The actual report is actually recommending that our rate decrease next biennium from 16.32% to 15.68%, and our retiree health care credit also decreases from 1.23 to 1.20, and the group life insurance remains the same. Again, I just want to stress currently, there are no funding in there for a salary increase, and the funding for the elementary principal is not in our next year's budget. Another piece that's in the governor's proposed budget is our slots for the Virginia Preschool Initiative decreased from 1,393 students to 1,288 students. At the beginning of every biennium, they look at, they adjusted and do projection, and the projection for the pre-K is based on our kindergarten enrollment. They look at that, and then they also subtract out Head Start. What they're really looking for, what preschool students are not covered to get that early childhood education. So, in Norfolk, going from 1,393 to 1,288 is a reduction of 105 slots, which equates to six classrooms. State funding is reduced $430,000 because they will not fund the additional slots. And then, on the other side, the staffing for six classrooms, basically the personnel cost for six teachers and six teacher assistants is about $594,000. So, that net impact is about a million dollars if you don't reduce the classrooms. And then, there is also a caveat in there that if other districts do not use all of their slots, that you can apply to get more. I don't know whether you recall or not, but the last biennium, we also lost about 250 slots.
Right.
And we had to reduce like 14 classrooms in the Virginia Preschool Initiative. And Ms. Malinak and I was talking to try to figure out what's causing this. What we came up with, you also recall that a few years ago, we had the Virginia Preschool Plus, so we called the VPI Plus. So, that meant they are serving more students. So, if they are serving more students via that federal grant, then maybe there are less served students in the district. But here again, it's just a projection that's based on kindergarten enrollment. We don't know yet. So, if we look at all the ups and downs and adjustments in the state revenues, we only get $2.1 million increase that's in Governor McCullough's budget, which in my years of education, that's kind of low for the first year of a biennium. Usually, you will see more money the first year and then a little bit leveling off the second year. But then again, it could be that also our enrollment is continuing to decline. The projection right now is look like we're still going to lose another, the early projection, another 500 students. So, with losing those 500 students, you know, that also impact us not getting as much money the first year of the biennium. On the expenditure side, the reduction in the VRS rates is a savings to the district of $1.1 million on the expenditure side. So, next steps, our new governor, Governor Northam, can propose amendments to the governor's budget. We have not seen them yet. We've seen some impact statements that he's talked about, but we have not seen any official amendments yet. You know that the House and the Senate both comes with their versions of the budget, and then there's this crossover period where the General Assembly will come out with what the General Assembly will recommend, and then the governor gets to have final action. So, we literally could have maybe four more budgets before we get to a final budget. Hopefully, in mid-March, we'll know because our budget or your budget is due to City Council April 1st. So, that's where we stand currently on the governor's proposed budget.
Questions for Ms. Ingram? Ms. Bassin?
Yes, so I have a couple of questions regarding the preschool spots. So, do we know currently of the other districts or surrounding districts, how many, have they used 100% of their slots?
I do not know.
You don't know? Is that something that we can look into? And my second part of that is what would our process...
For this current school year or for the projected next year?
For the current school year and what might be projected for the next school year. And then, the second part of that, what would our process be for trying to, if, potentially use those spots?
Usually, they'll come out a period of time, and I don't, I need to research that as far as what that timeline is.
Okay.
If there are additional slots, that they will let the districts know that there are additional slots that you can apply for to have.
Okay. So, if we could get that information, and then the second part, or the third part of my next question is, if we, as we get into our budget planning, if we wanted to absorb the cost into our operating budget, would the cost be comparable?
It'd be a million dollars.
Okay.
Because your revenue is going to go down $430,000, and then you won't lose, the expenditure is $594, so the net impact will be a million dollars.
Okay.
You're maintaining the expense.
So, it would be the same?
And then you'll lose the revenue.
All right.
I'm confused.
Okay.
You had the revenue before, didn't you?
We have it in this year. For next year, our revenue is going to go down $430,000.
But we're not going to increase the slots, so the slots stay the same?
No, the slot's going down. So, if the slot's going down, they are funding fewer slots, so you're going to lose $430,000 revenue. If we do not offset the revenue loss with the expenditure reduction, which means you're going to maintain that expense, which you could have gotten rid of, in addition to maintaining the expense, you're losing $400,000. So, basically, the city will be funding the full cost of those classrooms, which will be the $594 for the teacher, teacher assistant costs, and the revenue that the state will not be giving us.
Right.
Net impact is going to be about a million dollars.
So, if I'm understanding, you're saying that the, when you use the language slots, you're referring to students that are being paid for by the state?
Right.
Right? However, from the locality, if we kept the students in the seat, then the local funding would be paying for the students and the staff. So, the number of students would remain the same, but the number of students that are being paid for by the VPI funding is what's being reduced, which results in us then carrying that million if we were to maintain the level of participation number of seats as we have currently.
Yes.
Right. But if I could add on, there's no guarantee, though, that those students are going to be in those slots based on the reduction of our kindergarten numbers, which is what this is based on, correct?
This is a projection of what they are thinking our kindergarten number's going to be for this year, and then looking at, I'm sure they're looking at a ratio of that percentage of...
Right.
Four-year-olds, unserved four-year-olds.
Right.
Now, if Head Start is serving more kids, that will impact the unserved students.
So, I...
If we still have VPI Plus, and if those classes are full, they are serving additional students. So, as, if Head Start is increasing, if we're moving kids into the VPI Plus, that's less unserved students, and that's what this VPI funds, is those unserved students.
And is there a way to project how many slots we think we could fill or how many students there would be coming this way? I know there's always early enrollment options.
I may divert to Ms. Malinak for that. She does the early and approval and get all that, the registration number, and then it determines as to whether they show or not.
Right.
Jamie, want to add anything?
I think just one of my concerns while Jamie comes to the podium is, do we need to consider this and factor this into our educational planning?
Well, you read my, that was the note that I, that I made, that I think as we have our retreat on Friday and also have our continuing conversation moving forward, not only as it relates to pre-K, but also as it relates to the projected decrease of 500 students.
Exactly.
So, I made that note for us to make that recommendation that we consider this as part of our ongoing planning.
Right. And was that projected with the...
Yeah. I don't remember all the...
Disruptor and so on.
Yeah, I remember all the numbers in front of us, but we need to...
Actually, our preliminary projection that we have from Mr. Foody and what the state came out with are fairly close.
Fairly close, okay.
So, and typically, around the first week or second week in February, he will give us an updated projection, and that projection is what we will actually use in the budget.
But I, again, let's revisit these numbers when it comes to educational planning because this impacts, how many classrooms are actually filled, and can we reallocate where those students go, reassign, so on and so forth?
Yeah, I made that note because I also think we have to, which we won't do tonight, but it also will give us to, an opportunity to delve deeper into, is it an issue of the number of children has changed or children are choosing other options that is causing the impact and having a good sense of that?
But they also, remember, they changed the criteria.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so...
The reduction in funding, of course, is based on that census data, and we have that declining enrollment, the projected kindergarten numbers, and then they look at the census data to determine the number of students that would be eligible based on the criteria that currently exists. We talked a little bit about if the district wanted to try to absorb those six classes within our budget, then we are not stuck for those six classes with the income criteria. That becomes then our criteria because the state is not giving us any funding. So, therefore, we would have the students, we have plenty of students that apply for the program, but because of income restrictions, don't qualify, they would, that would open it up for them, and then we would have to determine what our income, or what our eligibility criteria would be for those additional spots. But we can definitely check on our surrounding districts as well to find out if they're using their slots and what the process would be to apply for additional funding.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you read my mind?
Mixed income pre-K?
Sorry?
Oh, go ahead. I thought those were the...
So, if the General Assembly allows there to be greater flexibility of the income qualifications today, that goes into effect July 1, would that impact next September?
Yes. If they get, we have that 15% variance where we can have our own criteria outside of the income, and that 15%, we don't utilize that 15%. We don't have enough applications that meet one of those criterias. But if they would open up and not have that income restriction...
Right.
Yes, we would, we have a lot of applicants that...
Right. And so, do know, we are advocating for that in Richmond right now. There were several of us that were in Richmond last week advocating for that, and I think many were open to that opportunity.
Yes.
But we'll just see what the white smoke is when the General Assembly decides at the end of the day what to do.
Yeah. Where I was going was in the conversations that we've had about maybe having mixed income pre-K, where we've had working families and other families, and I mean, working in terms of the income criteria, where the income criteria has not afforded them the opportunity to be in the pre-K program, that if we ended up with a 100% local funded six classrooms, whatever it may be, then as was said, we would set the criteria, and then that may be an opportunity for us to allow individuals that wanted to take advantage of our pre-K to get in who were otherwise denied because of restrictions from the other funding stream.
Right.
So, to me, while it's a funding piece, I think in our educational planning, it may open up some other opportunities that perhaps we've been pushing towards all contingent upon getting support.
Right.
To prioritize that.
Right. Okay, it could be an opportunity, yeah.
Mr. Jordan?
Mm-hmm.
On another subject, Ms. Ingram?
Yes, sir.
I would like to know, do you know when the administration will be able to propose budget reduction strategies for this budget? What is the projection of when that type of, those proposals will come forward?
I believe Dr. Boone is proposing to present to the school board first of March.
Yes. So, prior, you know, we, with our schedule also being impacted by the weather, you all know that we're having our mini-retreat on Friday, which this is not on that agenda. However, we are also having the elongated work session of the 7th, is that correct? And then also on the 21st. So, we'll have an opportunity to continue our discussion in terms of board priorities and where we are as far as budget is concerned, within the anticipation of the superintendent bringing that initial viewpoint from the administration first part of March, and then we'll be rolling up our sleeves and working like we always do to see what we end up with. And I would just, I know you use the terminology budget reduction strategies, but we haven't gotten there yet. So, you know, we still have conversations that are going on around Funding Formula, we have other things that are out there, and so, I don't want us to go immediately to the budget reduction conversation till we get to the identification of need conversation first, so. Any other questions for Ms. Ingram? Ms. Doyle?
Are you getting wind of anything that Dr. Northam, Governor Northam, might do in terms of proposing changes to the former governor's budget?
You know, when I was at VAS and VASBO the other week, and he spoke, and he talked about his support for education, he talked about we need to increase the salaries for our teachers.
Right.
But we haven't seen anything official yet that he's making amendments to what's been introduced.
Okay.
He mentioned that also when he spoke at the School Board Association Conference, and which kind of follows up on my other clarifying question. So, in the current governor's proposed budget, where you had the no salary increases for teachers in 2019, that's where the current budget calls for some contribution in the second year, but not the first year?
Yes.
All right. And so, you know, one possibility could be that Governor Northam maybe could adjust that, we don't know, but...
He could adjust that either the House or Senate as well in their version can come out with salary increase for next year.
All right. So, as you mentioned, Ms. Doyle, with some of our advocacy at the General Assembly, I think that's, you know, every year seems to be that way that folks talk about salary increases for teachers, and then when you get down to it, there's this, do it in the middle of the year, do it in the second year. But that's another area where we can have some advocacy. Anything else from Ms. Ingram on this report? Dr. Rogers, anything else?
No, sir.
All right. So, we'll go on to the next agenda item, and Ms. Ingram, if you'll stay at the podium and provide us an update on our monthly financial reports.
Okay, this will be the monthly financial report that ended December 31st for our sixth accounting period. Revenue received as of the end of December was $140.5 million or 43.2% of the total budget. It compares to 48.7% for the same time period in 2017 and 46.4% in 2016. On the expenditure side, we have expenditures of $135.2 million or 41.6% of the budget, and it compares to 43.4% same time period last year and 44.7% for 2016. There were no budget transfers in December, there was $50,000 of greater for the period. And as always, behind that is a different presentation of the financial information for the operating budget as well as the child nutrition fund.
Any questions from Ms. Ingram?
And also, I think there is a report that gives you the quarterly grant information, one report for the federal funds and then one report for the state funds that was as of December as well.
Thank you for those. Those look very good. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
All right, any further questions for Ms. Ingram on any of the reports that she's presented? Do I have a motion to accept the monthly financial reports as presented?
I move that we accept the financial reports as presented.
All right, moved by Ms. Doyle.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Bassin. Any further discussion? All right, here now, Ms. Banks, if you call or roll.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Next, for matters of the board, just want to first thank the board for its indulgence. As I mentioned, with the weather, our board governance training was postponed. We were trying to make up in terms of other meetings that we missed or had to postpone because of the snow. And so now, over the next few weeks, we're gonna have quite a few meetings in order for us to catch up and stay ahead of some of our work. As I mentioned a moment ago, we do have a school board mini-retreat that's scheduled for this Friday. It'll start at eight thirty a.m., scheduled to end at two thirty p.m. The full agenda, as has been proposed by Dr. Boone, I'll, we'll send out this evening, but I just want to give you a sense that we will have, as we discussed, an update dealing with just leadership, the superintendent's remarks, as far as the theory of action that's been underway, the ongoing work with focus schools, as we know they've been involved with our division. Then there'll be a mid-year academic update, which will include a review of our literacy model, including audit and research with that professional development data and discussion around that. We also will give ongoing attention to our district-wide improvement model. As we've discussed previously, this will be an opportunity for us to get a update on our specialty programs, which will include discussion of the potential of STEAM program being at Booker T., as well as the ongoing specialty program work that we know has been underway. Also include updates with our comprehensive CTE high school work, alternative ed update. We'll also have a Maury High School ed specification update. And then we'll close with any other matters of the board, where we can then kind of reset where the board feels we are moving forward as we move into our elongated work sessions coming up. There were some other items that board members had sent, dealing with impact aid and so forth. Those are being scheduled, being timed with our reports and information that the administration's going to, will receive from appropriate sources. And, but we'll have quite a bit before us, and just ask if everyone will be on time to the extent that your schedule allows you to do that, and will be fully engaged in that, in that mini-retreat. The other item, so the governor's training that we originally had scheduled for the first week of January, we've been unable to find a date to reschedule that. We looked at February and just could not accomplish that. We had on the schedule for our next training with the VSBA to be April the twentieth. Gonna send you another note just to look at that date, there may be some conflict with a couple of school board members, so I'm just gonna send to you today, or within the next twenty-four hours, another date for you to look at, so we can nail that down and be prepared for our governor's training in April, which I think is important that we uphold.
Is that training in April, whatever the date, in Norfolk or Charlottesville?
It would be in Charlottesville, as of right now, pending feedback from the board if we find that for some reason we need to change that.
Okay.
So those are the two main things, I want to make sure that the board is aware of. Are there other matters from any other member of the board that we need to have consideration now, especially as we move into the mini-retreat on Friday? Arturo, how are you, sir? Anything you'd like to share with us at this time, as you've been in the school about four or five days this month?
Well, I know that all my friends are actually excited to be back in school. It's been, it's good seeing the end of the first semester, and just to see like everyone that I know is closing out strongly. And now that I have a lot more time this second semester, I am definitely excited to get like more involved and show much more initiative with like with the school board on matters of the school board affair, from either the, from any of the members. The semester was well, went well for me, although I had a very heavy course load with seven AP classes, I was able to finish off very strongly with straight A's this semester. So I'm just very excited for what's coming in this next semester, especially with college like admissions and everything that's happening. So I'm definitely gonna be putting a lot more effort into the second semester with the school board, because I know it's like one more semester, and just wanna do as much as I can with the time I have left here, and work with Andrew as well, in order to really facilitate the school board and the student connection, so.
And speaking to Mr. Andrew, who's here as well, is there anything you'd like to add or share with us at this time? Andrew is our alternate student school board member to the rep, and he also attends our meeting, so if there's anything you'd like to add at this time?
I'm glad that first semester's over. Got through it, finally done with exams, a little adjusted exam since we missed so much school, but that's okay. And just on the home stretch, trying to get in hearing from some colleges pretty soon, and with more time as well, like Arturo, looking to get more involved with the school board, and really talk about some stuff that we can potentially impact for the better.
Well, we thank both of you for your service and what you are doing on behalf of the board, as well as with your peers. You also reminded me, another function or event that was rescheduled due to the weather was the event at Berkeley Early Childhood Center with Apple Connect Ed. So just a reminder, that's been rescheduled to February the eighth. Arturo, February eighth. Arturo made me think about that, since he always hangs out at the Apple booth wherever we go.
What's the time?
Ms. Banks will make sure, I think it should be on your calendars, but we'll make sure if it's, if it's not already. And then lastly, our schedule with educational planning as it relates to the conversation we've been having with the potential change of pathway feeder pattern with St. Helena Elementary School, Blair, and Lake Taylor Middle, as that change would go in effect once the, you know, should the board decide to approve that. Just wanted to remind the board and also the public, we will continue to receive information and feedback from the public on the St. Helena move, or anything else that we're dealing with as far as educational planning. Right now, we would look to take action on that February twenty-first, so we'll continue to have that conversation at our upcoming meetings, but I just want the public to know that while we had that initial public hearing, we have in essence still allowed for additional comment if there's any that, any parent or any staff member, or any other member of the public would like to weigh in on that ongoing conversation. So, anything else for the, Dr. Rogers?
I just have one, I think Arturo's being a little modest of himself.
Modest with straight A's.
With straight A's. I just wanted to thank him on behalf of District Leadership Team. He joined us this Monday, is Monday Tuesday, on his day off to help us with our district-wide mid-year leadership day. And he provided the definition for leadership, if I'm not mistaken, is that right, Arturo? So he was instrumental in our day. We had a successful day of almost two hundred and seventy administrators in that entire school district, and he was a face of the students, and he represented very well, so I wanted to thank him publicly for contributing.
Thank you for that, and I hope you opened the door and the eyes of all involved, that there's a lot of value that our students can bring to the table, and if we open up opportunities in our own organization for internships, and opportunities for students to provide input, that I think will yield great results, as it seems as input did for you all. So, thank you for bringing that, and thank you, Arturo, for doing that on your day off, so to speak. I'm not aware of you having one. So anything else from members of the board? Ms. Banks, any, anything you need for us to be aware of?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right, with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to a journey, and I'll see everybody Friday morning.